Welcome, everybody, to the August 12, 2024 Select Board Meeting. Can I have a call to order, please?
Andrew here.
Articoff is here.
Gibson here.
Sakosha here. All right, with that, stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I do have some sad news to report on. We lost a few former Select Board members, one being Charter Weeks and one Stanley Swire. Charter Weeks moved to Barrington in 1971 and served on countless boards, committees, and commissions. These posts include the School Board, Select Board, Planning Board, Police Advisory Committee, and others. His involvement in local government also motivated his founding of the Advocates for a Better Barrington, which was focused on voter education for residents. In 2012, he was recognized as Volunteer of the Year. Mr. Swire was a founding member of the Barrington Food Pantry, helped to form the Swains Lake Village Water District, ensuring clean water in his neighborhood, and was a longtime town and school moderator. He originally became a moderator as a write-in candidate and served for 33 years. In 2018, he was recognized as Citizen of the Year, and in 2019, he was named Volunteer of the Year. So with that being said, I'd like to take a moment of silence for these two. Thank you. Next up is the Agenda Review and Approval.
No changes on my end.
Motion to approve the agenda.
And I'd second that.
Okay, roll call.
Andrew here.
Articoff, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Sakosha, aye. Okay, this brings us up to...
Public comment.
Public comment. If there's anybody online or in studio that would like to come up and have public comment, three minutes.
Is this for the agenda items, or is this generally speaking?
This is a general public comment session. There's two here. You're only allowed to comment on either one, one here later in the meeting.
And there's a separate public hearing for the topic of a building permit issuance on Cottage Lane, so that there'll be opportunity for public comment at that agenda item separately.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, with not seeing any more online or in studio, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. And that is going to bring us up to public hearings and invited guests. And we have...
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. It feels like it's been a while since, at least since I've been here. I hope you guys are all enjoying your summers. And in that same spirit of enjoying summer, I'll be brief so that we can, hopefully you guys can get out of here and enjoy your summer. We had our strategic planning meeting as a board and our leadership team in July, and it was very, very productive. And we look forward to presenting some additional information, not just to you, but also to the town in the future. And then also, we are looking to wrap up our summer school program. We had about 50 children, which is about pretty average if you take away COVID time numbers of students. So that was, that was great, and it was very successful. And we were really excited that we had a full staffing for that, which is nice. And then the admin teachers and admin team are just excited to get ready for the new school year, which starts August 29th, if you can believe it, comes after July 4th. It feels like basically summer's over, but that's, that's all I have for today. But then we get back into our regular meeting schedule as well, starting very soon, so starting that next meeting. And so we'll be having some more media updates then as the beginning of the year comes in. But that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is, we got letter B, and this is the issuance of a building permit on Cottage Lane, a private road for Suzanne Schmider and Rhonda Effie, map 115, lot 10.
Is this time for public comment, or shall I wait?
Yeah, as the applicant, if you want to give a once-over, that would be great.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm Susan Schmider. Thank you for taking the time to consider this. We own a two-unit manufactured home on Cottage Lane. We do not own Cottage Lane. And we're, it's, the home is in desperate need of replacement. It's 50 years old and leaking. And we have applied for a building permit. We're staying on the footprint, and we are also going up somewhat. So there's no additional movement, but there is a little bit more living space. After meeting with the town, we did review the Class IV private road building policy and determined that under Category 2 Subsection I, since we were replacing an existing business with the use and the footprint remaining the same, that that applied. Another option was Category 3, but that talked about additions to existing buildings, which added living space or potential living space. And so based on that, in our conferences, multiple conferences with staff, we did apply under Category 2. Mr., I think it's Maciver, Connor Maciver, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, was kind enough to call me and spend a great deal of time on the phone and indicated to me that historically adding any volume would have made it a Category 3. However, this, the language of the statutes actually make it fall under, at least by plain reading, Category 2. So that's why we submitted that, and we're requesting that we be passed. We would also add that we don't own this road, and we don't have any control over what is done to it. It's also, there are two other people on the lane. They also don't own the road, and they have not been terribly cooperative with us. We don't have a lot of confidence that we can form a committee and maintain it. They don't share plowing. There, a tree of theirs fell on our house. They won't allow us to cut any other trees down. And we're just concerned that, given that we don't have the control to make this happen, it's also next to wetlands, that we're not going to be able to move forward if we're required to actually change anything on a road we don't own, cooperating with people who are not cooperative. So based on that, we are respectfully requesting that we be allowed to build under Category 2.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Is there a reason that you're not replacing the footprint with the exact same size unit?
We are. My understanding is we are.
Same square footage? Is there a reason that you're not able to do that?
Mean, reduce, the identical square footage.
What you have, replacing it identically.
Is there a reason? No, I don't think there's a reason we could not do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Who owns the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the road is owned by an abutter on Lindsey Point Road that takes access from Lindsey Point Road. You'll remember that Lindsey, this property, the Lindsey Point Road property, was before Classics Private Road Building Policy a couple of years ago. And so the nuanced issues of having property with access over somebody else's property is an inherent problem that we're trying to solve with the Classics and Private Road Building Policy, right? So presumably, and each situation is different, but presumably those lots have access easements over the property, which would include maintenance and repairs of the property. Might not include widening. Hopefully, those details include the width of the access, but they don't always. And the inherent problems with not having any of that defined are situations where you don't have shared maintenance or shared repairs. And the issues that arise from that are the roads fall into further and further disrepair because they're not kept up, they're not maintained, and they're certainly not improved. And so the, the Policy Committee for this policy discussed at length the challenges that property owners may face in improving the roads, making incremental improvements to the roads. And unfortunately, a big hurdle may be ownership or expansion of the right-of-way or, you know, in other cases, you know, wetland requirements from the state. And the group felt that the importance of incrementally improving roads outweighed the importance of building or replacing building on roads that need to be repaired. And so it's a, you know, the policy, the goal is obviously to fairly apply the policy to, you know, similar applicants. And the, the decisions of, the decisions that support making 10% improvements and incrementally improving the roads has, you know, been something that's proved, proved effective over the time of the policy's existence.
We don't know if that road's in a, it's just in an abutter's name. There's no rhyme or reason for them to, to keep it up, to upkeep?
Well, so the owners of the road don't take access using that road.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so I mean, and this is how a lot of camp properties, especially around the lakes in town, evolved over time.
Sure.
Right? So it's, it's broken up, and, you know, I, not having done the deed research, I haven't had a reason to do the deed research, but I imagine that the three properties that take access from this road have either in their deeds or in the subject property's deeds reference to access rights across it. And I don't know, it looks like the applicant has her hand up. She might have details about that.
Go ahead.
If I could, please, I don't mean to interrupt. I do have a copy of the deed, and it does give a right-of-way. It does not give any width of it. It's just simply the right to cross over.
Yeah, pass and repass. Yeah, and so generally, in New Hampshire, that right to pass and repass includes the ability to maintain and improve that access. But when it isn't clearly defined, it takes some effort to clearly define that. And, and we, the policy clearly states that those efforts and the costs associated with those efforts are applicable for the 10% investment in improving the road because that... So it could be that a property owner invests 10% of the building costs into road improvements, but it actually isn't bringing in gravel or installing culverts, but doing, you know, legal research or deed work with abutting property owners to lay the foundation for future improvements. You'll remember that there was an applicant, application on Cottage Lane a couple of years ago, and they ultimately ended up scaling back the size of the work that they were planning to do because they, they weren't interested or able to approach the road improvements that would have been necessary with the larger project. And so, you know, there certainly are hurdles.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes.
May I ask a question of the applicant? Are you, are you residing on the property right now?
In this moment, no.
Is anyone residing in that property right now?
Yes.
Okay, and is it, is it someone that's going to be residing in it after it's been replaced?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So when I look at stuff like this, it's not only, you know, one is the applicant, but we got to look at, you know, further down the road. You know, and it looks like this is going on the exact same foundation, but there's like an added level, so there's added volume in there from what I can see. And maybe these people may not necessarily have any more people living there than what they, they have now, but we have to look down to the future and what it could hold. So...
Understood.
I would be probably in favor of wanting to see this come back, maybe in a Category 3.
I think there's a real concern about the road. I don't know, I don't know how much access you have on that road. There's a difference between just accessing the road and having fire and ambulance using the road. And that's been the major concern of both Classics and the private road policy is how we can, our emergency services can access these properties. I don't see a comment from...
They haven't weighed in yet.
Exactly.
And they haven't weighed in because it was submitted as a Category 2, right? Without road improvements.
I think it needs to be Category 3 also because I'm concerned about this quality of roads.
Well, that's why it's in place, right? Do you have a sense how deficient the road is? Like, would, how many applications would it take to actually bring it to standard?
May I, may I address some of this?
Please.
One, I would just like to know that, like you to know, the fire department has been down there for a number of emergencies, and it has been fined so far. My concern, actually, living there, should this be Category 3, is there only three homes there? Already, one neighbor has not gone forward with the build because he was not able to absorb the road costs, which means the road is in the condition it was before. If the costs are so substantial that no one on that road can afford to build, what will happen is the road will just continue not to be maintained at all because it's, it's too much. And so the properties will go in disrepair. The septics could go in disrepair. I, I mean, it just has almost the opposite effect potentially as what would be desired. And so far, there has been no problem with fire trucks. So we are hoping for a more modest remedy so that we could go forward.
Thanks for your comment.
Thank you.
Could I, could I ask what the cost of the replacement build is?
Well, under current inflationary standards, it's a ghastly cost. It's, it's about $1 million.
Okay.
So it's a lot of money.
This is for modular?
The existing is modular.
Okay.
No, the existing is, is a trailer.
To come back to your question about the, the, the status of the road, was that your question?
Yeah, it kind of ties into the question that she had about being only three. I was wondering how many projects of this size, for example, would it take for it?
Right. And so the, the property owner that had applied before, they didn't, they did make improvements to the road, but they scaled back the size of their project as a result of the, their original plan and the amount of investment in the road that, that would have been necessary to meet the policy. And so, yeah, there are only three, I believe there are only three houses served by this road. And so whether it's how many, you know, 10% improvements or how many times each one would be improved, you know, the big deficiencies on this property, on this road from the previous application are the proximity to the wetlands choking down the width of the road. And then around a bend, there's a, I think there's a large tree that the prior, that the owners of the, that own the road and the abutting property haven't been interested in allowing to be taken down. And that chokes up the road and the turning radius. And I will point out that the fire chief has, has made it clear time and time again that the, our fire department and ambulance will respond to any service call required. And just because they can get there and they do get there doesn't mean that the conditions are optimal to do so. And the, the big challenge for our emergency vehicles is in the spring and fall when the ground's soft, especially on gravel roads. But we point out to property owners frequently that it's just as much about making sure that the fire truck and ambulance can get in there as a fuel truck or, you know, delivery vehicles that, that are more frequently using these access points.
Sure.
And so, you know, that has consistently been the fire chief's perspective, that they will get to where they can anytime, but that doesn't mean it's a, an appropriate level of risk for a million-dollar fire engine.
Is this the first, second, or third lot on that lane?
First.
Okay. And is this on our list of the roadways that were suggested for no...
That list is only Class 6 roads.
So this is not on?
Not on the list.
Okay. But definitely seeing that it needs a Category 3.
Okay, and do I have a motion?
I would make a motion. Based, based on the information provided, I'd make a motion to deny the issuance of a building permit for map 115, lot 10 on Cottage Lane due to the proposed addition of living space or an additional level, which triggers the Category 3 requirements requiring that we include road improvements.
I'll second that motion. You'll call? Andrew, aye?
Articoff, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Sakosha, aye. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing and, public hearings. And that is going to bring us on to the Consent Agenda. There's no amendments, I believe.
There are none.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as second. Roll call?
Roll call?
Andrew. Aye.
Articoff, aye.
Gibson, aye.
Sakosha, aye. We don't have any appointments today, so I'm going to pass this on to our TA, Connor, to give us our staff report.
Awesome. And I will point out that on the consent agenda was the second review and vote on Brandy McKay Berry's appointment to Community Action Partnership Board.
Excellent.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll start out with August work anniversaries. Chief Conway, longtime police chief in the town of Barrington, now the recreation site supervisor, has worked for the town of Barrington for 37 years now.
Wow.
And a treat to all of the children that participate in those rec programs. Michael Bayer has been in EMS for 14 years. Keith Brody, fire and EMS, for 13 years. Patrice Lindsey takes minutes for the Conservation Commission meetings, and she has served in that post for 12 years. Michelle Libby was somewhat recently promoted to police sergeant and has been with the town of Barrington for eight years. Shane Elliott in the Highway Department for seven years. Jamison Young, police officer, was hired six years ago, as was I, six years ago this month. The road agent was hired four, five years ago, excuse me, this month. Rebecca Gomez, who was hired as a town clerk assistant, but recently promoted to deputy town clerk, was hired two years ago. Chad Lee in the Recreation Department is program coordinator for two years. And Noah Tugus was hired in the Police Department two years ago this month. A lot of work anniversaries in August and hopefully a lot more tenure ahead of all those employees.
Excellent.
Barrington's AU All-Star baseball team are the state champions. They made it to the...
Congratulations.
Right? They made it to the regional competition in Milford, Connecticut, with, where they competed valiantly. But state champs a big deal, 8 and under for the town of Barrington.
Excellent.
Very exciting. 2025 budget development, so, you know, we're about halfway through spending the 2024 budget, and focus is quickly shifting to development of the 2025 budget. There, there were a few changes. This year, most notably, the Select Board supporting budget presentations to the Advisory Budget Committee. So those meetings will happen in this room. Department heads will present to the Advisory Budget Committee. Those meetings will be on Tuesdays at 3:00. They'll be available for virtual participation and be recorded. I included in your packet a copy of the budget calendar, so that establishes a few things. First, it establishes what the Advisory Budget Committee meetings are. You'll see those in green. And also which departments or which presentations are happening each of those meetings. And so if a Select Board member or any member of the public is interested in tuning in or participating in one of those budget presentations, you have that information ahead of time. So...
So they'll all be, we'll, we'll be able to watch them, should we?
Yes. And in each, and we'll refine this, and please don't hesitate to give feedback, but we will be giving updates at the regular Select Board meetings, but not the 45 minutes or hour, hour and a half of the meeting, you know, more brief. But I'll include the link to the budget meeting presentations in my Town Administrator Report. I do plan, the initial budget presentation is on October 15th. Our next Select Board meeting is on October 21st. I do plan to spend a little bit longer at that meeting than at most subsequent meetings, just doing a once-over, running through the PowerPoint presentation of the initial budget request. So we kind of all start from the same platform on 2025 budget development. And of course, that will allow the Select Board, as designed, to focus more on the bigger picture and longer-term changes, reviewing and developing funding plans for the capital improvement program and other longer-range planning tasks. So that is budget development. Each Select Board member will still have a budget binder. Those will be ready on October 1st. Any thoughts or questions, budget process? Awesome. Ayers Lake Boat Launch improvements, we're still working on securing permits for that project. The Barrington Center Development Committee has continued to meet. They've connected with hundreds of residents at the concerts over the last few Thursdays on different topics. They finalized a tagline for the town center, which is "Welcome to the Town Center, Where Barrington Comes Together." And that tagline is expected to be shared with businesses in the town center as well as the municipal efforts, so that we can have some consistency. The, the perimeter trail is probably the most exciting development of this group. And I give a lot of credit to our Chair, Jim Sakosha, for spending a lot of hours out there volunteering his commercial equipment and insurance, cutting a trail, perimeter trail around that property. And so if you haven't been out recently, you should go take a walk. It's really coming together nicely. There's others involved also. I'll point out Matt Movers, who's a member of the Recreation Commission and also a member of the Barrington Center Development Committee. He's been out there starting to work on the, the handwork, the raking, clearing of, of the trail. And so we'll continue to work on that and hopefully start programming some events out there before too long. Highway Department came out and mowed all the fields. Looks beautiful out there. We're going to get some pictures up. There's a new Barrington Center Development Committee Facebook page to help kind of highlight the work of that group. So be looking for that, and I'll include a link in the next Town Administrator Report. Thoughts or questions about Barrington Center Development activities?
Keep the good work going.
Cool.
Exciting.
Ditto. Trail Interconnectivity Stakeholder Meeting update. So the focus of this group is on aggregating and connecting all, as many trails as we can in town. They continue to work on getting everything on a map, on the various layers on a shared map, so we can look at, identify areas of improvement and make improvements. Strategic planning goals, progress and future action steps. So a lot of updates included in here. I won't read through all of them, but again, the, each update is emboldened with a date, so you can scan and look for what progress has been made or future, future action steps will be taken. We're targeting maybe the October meeting to bring a draft memorandum of understanding from the library. They're going to review that at their September meeting.
Date, say it again?
October.
October.
Probably the 7th.
Okay.
Just scanning through to make sure there isn't anything important I want to point out specifically, but available for your review. Any thoughts or questions about goal progress? Moving the ball forward on a lot of things at once.
We are.
I just appreciate that we have a live working document to revisit each meeting and see that things are getting accomplished. It's great.
Awesome. Very importantly, I said we're halfway through the year. The second quarter financial analysis is in your packet. Really nothing of tremendous interest. We are on target with our expenditures at 45%. Our revenue at 43% is also on target, if not a little ahead of schedule. You'll remember that our state revenue comes in in the fourth quarter. So we always look like we're behind on revenue through the year because we don't collect that until the fourth quarter. And our state sources of revenue represent about 25% of, of the revenue that we collect, non-property tax revenue. So those numbers track with prior years. Thoughts or questions about financial analysis?
It's slightly trailing where we were last year. Is that what I'm understanding?
In revenue or expenditures?
In revenue.
So I would say no.
Okay.
If you look at the last page, the bar chart on the last, last page shows that as a percentage of our estimate, we'd collected a little bit more by this time last year, percentage-wise. The, the difference is we collected, we have collected more in dollars this year, but our estimate is higher because state sources continue to increase.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Yes and no.
Okay.
We're on, we are on target to meet our revenue goals, but it's harder to compare year to year because it's, that's a percentage of, of what we have estimated, and that changed every year. On August 28th, at 6:00 PM, the Department of Transportation will be holding a public hearing in public information meeting in this room for the culvert projects that they have in planning phase on Route 4. You'll remember representatives from the Department of Transportation came, presented at a Select Board meeting. Just a brief update, this will be a more all-encompassing public hearing on the construction projects.
And when is that?
They had it scheduled for 2028, but I understand that they may have lined up funding to do it sooner. So there will probably be an update at that meeting, and I will share.
Okay.
Exemption and credit changes for the 2025 warrant. So I always put the word out about this time during the summer. The 2023 exemption and credit analysis is linked in my Town Administrator Report. We will have that updated with 2024 numbers in October, when the data becomes available. But if the Select Board is interested in considering any changes to the existing exemptions and credits, starting to do the data analysis and backup now is always helpful so that we can be prepared to start putting warrant article language together if there are goals... are goals the Select Board wants to accomplish.
Last year, we got a very detailed and helpful report where we were able to analyze with the reassessment, the number of homeowners or residents of our town that were impacted. Could we do that again?
We don't have a revaluation this year, and so the, the same changes won't happen. The, the data, like the property.
People's income could have changed, though, that maybe took them out of the running. And I think that's where it's important for us to know, did anyone's income move over the, the means-based cliff where now they're not eligible? And if that's not happening, we, I think we need to know that.
So that process happens on the same five-year cycle as the revaluations. So we're not, the, how the exemptions are set up, say the elderly exemption, which has an income and asset level, we're not checking that data every year.
Oh, we're not? Okay.
We're not supposed to. We're not, that's, the DRA wants us to do that every five years as part of our review cycle. And so, you know, property changes would result in, in some of that.
But it sounds to me like what I'm requesting would be what we saw last year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know.
Yeah, the, the data that will change is the utilization of those exemptions and credits, and we'll have that updated report in October. That will show how many credit, credits have been issued for 2024 tax year and how that compares to prior years and how that compares, how the levels compare to state or county averages.
Excellent.
Okay, great. And I also included a list of training opportunities, in case anybody's interested. The one that I am very interested in participating in is the do's and don'ts of electioneering webinar, which is a topic that this board has discussed and considered, how to find that balance. And you'll remember that there was an Attorney General opinion from Nashua, which kind of updated some people's perspectives of original expectations of what electioneering was, and that opinion kind of changed that, so.
Is this also on September twenty-third? So we've got the dates for the budget and finance workshops?
That's a great question. I'll tell you. I feel like it's not the same date, but I, I apologize for not putting the date in there. It's on both mine Tiffany's calendar, so. September twenty-sixth.
That's the date of the do's and don'ts?
Do's and don'ts of electioneering.
It's a Thursday.
Yep.
Twenty-sixth September?
Twenty-sixth September.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
MOA, looks like you're off the hook this week?
Nope, one thing. Oath of Office, that was just approved, and that's it. And that'll be through the DocuSign. So it's a Thursday.
Excellent. Old Business, map twenty-six lots, thirteen-point-one and nineteen development plans. So this is in regards to the lot, the fifteen acres that's next to Liberty Truck. And we're working with Jones and Beach Engineers, they've been hired, to evaluate development opportunities there. And we would like to maybe open it up and see who's out there for builders and see who would have a plan to come forward and see what their plan of action is. We're considering authorizing the development for requests for proposals, which would invite development ideas for this area. The RFP would ask for the details about the type of development readiness to complete the project. If authorized by the Select Board, the RFP would be reviewed by the Town Lands Committee, Conservation Commission prior to advertisement. The Select Board would review proposals and consider entering a development agreement to accomplish the proposal. Do I have any discussion from the board?
We kind of discussed this already.
Correct.
I think we know where we are, just kind of implementing that.
Yep. So do I hear a motion?
If I was excluded from motion.
You were not. It's your turn.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion to authorize the development advertisement after input from the Town Lands Committee and Conservation Committee of a request for proposals for the development of fifteen acres of town-owned property on One Twenty-Five South adjacent to Allegiance Trucks.
I would second that motion.
Vote call.
Mantrick, aye.
Article apply?
Gibson, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
Did you have something?
Yeah, the, the Jones and Beach Engineering evaluation, when does that come back?
So they, that project is underway. Pending this decision tonight, their focus will be on that part of the property first. And we had talked previously at our strategic planning workshop about using maybe the, the sale or licensing of a portion of this property to help fund some of the advanced stages of engineering or preparing it for development. And so they, I included in your packet the most recent existing conditions plan. What they'll do is they'll start by updating the existing conditions over where that approximately fifteen acres of buildable area is and prepare a package for, help prepare a package for advertisement of what the features and challenges of development of that property are.
Is this adjacent to the Lee Town Line?
It doesn't border it exactly, but it's down that way.
And then there's one more commercial building going in before you hit Lee?
There's a few commercial properties before you hit Lee, and there's driveways of other commercial property.
Okay.
Like northern nurseries.
Yep.
Their driveway is in Lee, but the business is in Barrington.
Yeah.
That, that one that's being built now, I believe that's going to be a welding shop.
That's across from One Twenty-Five Fins.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. So lots of commercial development in that area, which is good.
Yeah, absolutely. And so the, the engineer will simultaneously be working on the bigger picture of development opportunities. And, you know, that, that scope, and the Select Board reviewed it, but that scope included a focus of how can, what is the highest level of development possible, right? Which would be one big facility on the larger buildable area. And so the scope for the engineer is to evaluate the opportunities there, get those to the town so we can start advertising those opportunities. And then if that doesn't, if we don't get any bites in a period of time, then we could look at maybe smaller developable areas, like separate fifteen-acre lots on that for some sort of development park, and then continue to get smaller. So kind of take a methodical approach to find the.
Right fit.
Best tax revenue for the town.
Excellent.
Okay. Onto new business. We always get to this point at one point in the year, and it's 2024 tax deeding. Each year, the tax collector must represent, must present the deeds to the Select Board for properties which have outstanding balances dating back three or more years. The, the deed date for 2024 is scheduled for August twenty-sixth of 2024, and we'll see a list of the properties eligible for tax deeding. It was attached below, and if we need to discuss any deed waivers or requests, that would be in a non-public session.
Which we don't have any to discuss, and as of today, there are fifteen properties left, left on that list, although the tax collector does anticipate that more will continue to come in and pay. That's generally.
In years past, haven't we sent that to the Town Lands before tax deeding for their evaluation?
No.
We have not.
No, after we deed, we send it to Town Lands to help us figure out how we want to dispose of it. We do have the Building Department review any property with buildings on them to make sure that we're not deeding a property that has potential hazard contamination issues, and we don't have any of concern this year.
Very good. Thank you.
Good. That is going to bring us up to Select Board Member Reports and Concerns. We're a little out of order here, but we'll start with Select Person Mantrick.
Well, ABC meetings, the organization being scheduled for the twenty-seventh, as Connor mentioned. First, first meeting with the budget binders will be the first of October. We may have another additional organizational meeting after the twenty-seventh, but wait until the twenty-seventh.
Excellent.
Transfer Station met last week and reviewed the CMA consultation report. There were still some questions that we wanted to, to get answers to. Two of the things that I think came up most, one interesting, one of the private trash collectors went out of business, and they have noticed an increase at the transfer station from that, so. I don't know what that pretends, but it's an interesting, interesting approach here. Some of the things that we did discuss was the CMA, from the CMA recommendation was the composting, and they recommended Mr. Fox. It's a little more expensive, but probably a better, better functioning organization if we wanted, if we wanted to do that. One of the options they discussed and that was offered was do citywide, townwide curbside pickup. And one of the big issues was that they wouldn't do that on, in town, like Dover and other places, but they wouldn't pick up on Class Six and private roads, which make up about thirty percent of the houses in this town. So the consent, I think the consensus of the Transfer Station Committee was not to recommend that. There will be, they'll have another recommendation next meeting, which is the twenty-sixth of August. Okay. Library.
Dan, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
I, I had a thought in reviewing those minutes that I would posit to the Select Board as we think ahead a couple of years. The topic of curbside trash pickup comes up by residents on a reasonable frequency, and it's usually dismissed easy enough by explaining how much it would cost or the challenges to serving all of our residents. I think we will have a unique opportunity around 2026 to get updated numbers for that. In 2026, we will be advertising for waste disposal. Our contract with Waste Management is expiring. Certainly, we will ask them for contract options, but we'll explore other options also. We set up the revolving funds, so we have some funding to explore other options as well. But if we're going through the trouble of advertising a request for proposals, it wouldn't be very difficult to include in that scope what it would cost to do curbside pickup and contemplate some of those issues like private and Class Six roads. Both Waste Management and Casella do curbside pickup in the area, and having those numbers, using that opportunity to get updated numbers from those service providers would probably help us in the future. I don't have any expectation that we would actually go down that road of curbside pickup, given the cost and the challenges to providing services to all of our residents, but we would have better information to provide residents with at that point. And I don't think it would make sense to go through that exercise beforehand, but, you know, 2026 will be here in a year and a half, and that might be a good opportunity to explore that option.
Right on.
Stay tuned.
Okay.
You'll all still be here, right? Great. Okay.
Up to the people.
Library trustees, they talk a little bit about the budget, price of books, price of book maintenance, dues, fees, postage, all going up. Much of it's going to depend on how, how long and when they will be closed for the development of the rec. And I don't know that we've gotten that, have we gotten that information?
Not specifically what, what they're planning, what the planning focus is right now, is what those operations will look like in the meantime. There was some talk about phasing the construction so that they would work on the rec side while the library continues operations, but the library has had challenges before, even when Zumba is going on in the gym, maintaining an appropriate library space. So it seems like that probably, once construction starts in that building, it'll probably make sense not to have any rec or library programs. And so that would be sometime early in the year, you know, February-ish.
The other thing we've discussed was the EBSCO grant for solar that they'd applied for did not come through, and so they're talking, they, I'm a little shaky on these numbers, but they think that they would cost eighty-four thousand dollars, which they don't have. There'd be forty-nine thousand in rebates. And what they were proposing, or talking about proposing, was for us to use our ARPA funds to make up the difference, and then they'd repay us the forty-nine and a half or forty-nine point three, forty-nine thousand plus or minus in rebates. I suggest, I suggested that we might be a little reluctant to do that, citing mission creep, but.
The discussions evolved as further to.
Yeah, so that, I bet with some representatives of the foundation and library trustees to discuss the topic of solar on that building, and, and the topic of requesting ARPA funds as a prepayment of the rebate came up. The challenge is the timing, the ARPA funds, the, the rebate, the biggest portion of the rebate comes about eighteen months after construction. And so, given the terms of the ARPA funds, I checked with the auditor to see what we could do with those funds, if we would even be able to collect them, and we wouldn't, and we wouldn't be able to spend them. And so ARPA funds doesn't make sense. It may make sense to use operating budget funds, and there would be some challenges with that, but the, the, there's no current request from the library trustees for such a thing yet. They're going back and developing a plan and will come forward. The meeting that I had was a exploratory meeting of what options could exist, and when, if and when the time's right, they'll make a request to the Select Board to be considered. But they are looking at opportunities to get solar on building.
Excellent.
Yeah. And let's see, oh yeah. They're, I, they were looking for estimates for security, IT, along with the town IT person, and the moving expenses, and they were pending, and I don't know the results of those yet. We'll probably know. The next meeting, which is the twentieth of August, is also the day the school board meets, but that's a separate issue. I missed the July meeting. It was, they were going to do mostly policy approvals, and I opted to, I had other, I had other plans that evening. But the school board, Select Board Collaborative, me, group, met on twentieth of July, and we discussed their focus, their sort of change of focus of the school board, those of the new members that are, that are on. That was kind of a general discussion. They did mention their need for additional space at elementary school, not so much from the fact that they don't have enough teachers, but that there are other requirements that have, that are part of the educational process. For example, the school needs, needs a space for speech therapy person, they need a space for some special education thing. So it's not so much that the number of pupils have increased, but there are additional requirements for various educational programs. We also discussed some cooperative efforts, particularly about childcare, which I think we've discussed before, but town facility, perhaps at, at the school, but incorporating all the town people. They want, they've talked about links on our, on our town website for school, which I think is a very good idea. They're going to put up a table at elections like we are to discuss things, and our next meeting is the twenty-sixth of August.
Excellent. Select Person, Hidokah.
So mine's going to be easy because there were no cases for the zoning board, so we didn't have a meeting this month.
Thank you.
Good job. Fastest meeting ever, right?
Mike Shear, Gibson?
Just to follow up on what Dan and the saying about the, the library. The Library Building Committee met on July twenty-fifth. I was on vacation that day, so I was not there. However, they did, they continue to move at a good pace on the planning for construction. The, we understand that the, the bond is moving along on schedule, which is great because that means for October that the, the building can, and those things can, can stay on schedule. So that was good. They are, as you mentioned, exploring options for solar. The, they're doing a lot of very impressive reuse of materials. For those of you who have seen the, the current medical building, there's a lot of high-end materials in there, the doors, the woodworking, the, the, even like the hardware, the, the mortise locks are like six hundred dollars each, and they're going to be reusing all of those. They're going to be taking a lot of things like auto door openers and things like that and using either in the new construction or with other places in town. And so Jim Anderson is working to figure out where to store some of these materials. So that's going really. Well, they're doing a lot with energy efficiencies, you know, the attic spaces. They're doing a lot with energy efficiencies, you know, the attic spaces and the insulating and all of the different things to try to keep the operating costs as low as possible once it comes online. Colin Williams is one of the members of the building committee too. He has connections at UNH and with movers, and was involved with the big library moves at UNH, and he's been negotiating or working with some of the different moving companies, and it looks like he's securing some much better deals than what they were seeing originally with movers.
And they're paying like $15,000.
Yeah, I know, so they're, they're looking, well, that's what I think they had budgeted, which wasn't going to nearly cover really what movers cost, but Colin's made great headway finding movers experienced at really reasonable, in fact, even at cost perhaps some of the offerings.
Wow.
Good news on the, the frugality and budget mindedness of the building. Energy committee met twice since last select board meeting, July 18th, August 1st, one of those days, again, I was on vacation. But they continue to work on things like, well, the solar on the roof here, it's not online yet, but it's, it is installed and, and PSN H is moving, I think quickly to try to get it activated for them.
And maybe a photo op ribbon cutting before the September 9th select board meeting. So we'll probably meet.
On the roof?
Yes, 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 actually.
Out of spring.
As a matter of fact, yep. We'll get, we'll get Jim's excavator here, get the buckets, just trolley people up. Yeah. So yeah, September 9th meeting, we'll probably do some photo ribbon cutting for the solar project. So stay tuned for scheduling that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, minutes are online, but the, the energy committee continues to work on a lot of different projects, initiatives. They're working with different groups around weatherization and efficiency for, for residents in town. They're working with other companies as far as solar installations for town. They're working with, what was the other I had from them?
Speaking of that, can I interrupt? With the woman that we just appointed to CAP, would we ask her when the energy programs open at CAP for the county, that she alert us so we can get a post out there to residents?
I want to say pre-applications are already open.
I think, I think you're correct.
Okay.
And, and it, and based on when you file becomes very important as the money is being spent. And so I would love, you know, now that we've appointed someone, I'd like to get a report back on all of those programs so we can push them.
Great.
Out to the community and get people programming. Sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, I don't know. The, the energy committee has a lot of interconnectivity with the library building committee in membership and in communication, and so they're, they're doing a lot with the building committee as far as, you know, advice on solar and efficiencies. They're also working closely with the, the school district and trying to learn more about how the school budgets and energy usage and all the things work and how they can work with them to.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, so.
Or maybe go green. So they use oil to build it.
Yeah, yeah, so there's a lot of opportunities to be had there. That was one that I was on vacation. And they're doing a lot with the, the trail interconnectivity too, just to kind of add on what was said earlier. Lot of excitement around that. They were working on some land around the Rochester Water Supply, which was in the report today. They were reviewing some more with the subdivision on Young Road. Again, I was not at that, that meeting, so I don't have as many details with the minutes are available for that. And that's about it.
Excellent. I won't bore you, a lot of my committees have already been talked about with Connor and the rest of the board, but as far as the rec, they're still going away with the summer concert series on Thursdays. Jessie, the work she's doing, she's going in a million directions, but she's, she's doing it with grace. Really, we're, we're really lucky to have her, and they're going to be doing the concert series, summer camps are going to be closing, they're going to be doing programings for upcoming school years. So that's kind of what's shaking at, at the rec. Technology committee, I don't have any updates on, they're still holding tough, still doing what they do, and that's about it for my side of things. With that, I'm going to open up the last public comment meeting. If there's anybody, if there's nobody in studio, if there's anybody online, go ahead and raise your hand. Okay? If nobody online, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment.
Okay.
No need for a non-public session tonight.
Excellent.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'm overly adjourned.
Second.
Call.
Teach you.
Mantrick, nope.
Article five.
Gibson, aye. Sakosha, aye. Thank you.